Newburgh Planning Commission.
Chris, go ahead.
May fourteenth, twenty twenty is not called order. Can you hear me? Can you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Bobby, you want to do roll call?
Okay.
Yeah. Is Alan Edwards on there? Jason Dale?
No.
Yeah, I can see that.
Here.
Jason, Robert Ficker?
Here.
Jenna Morris?
Here.
Chris Wright?
Here.
Sharon Capri? Jeffrey Musso? Colin Bullock?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, so Jason, this is the point to ask for any public comments.
Okay, we'll now open the record for any public comments for anyone has any comments on anything not on the agenda tonight. I'm assuming that's nobody here to do that.
Uh, well, we have one, one citizen who's called.
Okay.
Yes, it's Cooper Fushi who chatted and let me know that he's, he's watching it for a class he's taking, so.
Okay.
Does he have anything you wish to enter into the record?
Present in the room, so to speak, for public comment.
All right, so the recap of that is that Cooper's listening in for a class and we have no public at City Hall, so we have no public comments. Uh, Jason, now it's time for consent calendar for the minutes.
Very well. Uh, at this time, we'd like to enter into the consent counter for the meeting from, let's see, our last meeting was canceled, so it would be for March, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so do I have any motions to enter in the consent calendar for the March twenty twenty meeting of the Newburgh Planning Commission?
Planning Commissioner Chris Wright, motion to approve PC minutes, March twelfth of twenty twenty.
Very well, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Bob Ficker, I'll second it.
Very well, I have a motion and law duly, uh, sorry, I'm a little scattered. Let's get a roll call vote, do we have any, or all, everyone say aye, who votes aye for this motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Hearing none, motion passes. The, uh, the minutes for the March twenty meeting, Plan Commission meeting passes. Uh, we're moving off.
So next up on the agenda is a quasi judicial public hearing. So this, Mr. Chair, is your opportunity to ask if there, call the hearing to order and ask if there are any ex parte contacts, bias, conflict of interest.
Very well, I have a judicial hearing if anyone had any ex parte contact or confidence or, um, challenge of jurisdiction. Speak up if you have. Hearing none, we'll move on and to the matter.
So, you know. Colin, this is the opportunity for you to read into the record the legal language, please.
You got it, boss. ORS one nine seven point seven six three required certain statements to be made at the commencement of a public hearing. The applicable city and state zoning criteria must be listed. This means that we must advise you of the standards that must be satisfied by the applicant prior to our approval of an application. The planning staff will list the applicable criteria during his or her presentation of the staff report. Persons wishing to participate in this hearing must direct the testimony or the evidence toward the criteria stated by the planner or other specific city or state criteria which you believe apply. You must tell us why the testimony or evidence relates to the criteria. Any issue which might be raised in an appeal of this case to the Land Use Board of Appeals, LUBA, must be raised in person or by letter at the local level to the city, prior to the city approving or denying the application. The law states that the issue must be raised in enough detail to afford the decision maker and the parties an opportunity to respond. This part of the law is also known as the quote, raise it or waive it, end quote requirement. If you do not bring it up now, you can't bring it up at LUBA. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of the approval in enough detail to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Prior to the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing on an application, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence or testimony regarding the application. The planning commission will grant such a request through a continuance or extension of the record.
Very well, thank you very much, moving on to the stuff for.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, so Doug Rux, Community Development Director, so what we have tonight is our case, CUP twenty dash zero 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 one. So it's a conditional use permit approval for an Oregon Liquor Control Commission regulated adult marijuana processing facility, it's at ten fifteen North Springbrook. Sue, do you want to bring up the PowerPoint? Uh, the applicant's representative is Anthony Stewart, he's online with us tonight, and the owner of the property is Ralston and Ralston LLC. Oh, wait a second here for Sue to pull up the PowerPoint.
Doug, is the PowerPoint up?
Okay, only got part of the screen, Sue. While Sue's working on that, I'll just keep moving forward, if that's okay with everyone.
Very well.
Uh, so the subject properties on North Springbrook Road. Sue, it still only has a partial, uh, half a screen, I'll just verbally go through this. So the property's on North Springbrook Road, north of Highway ninety-nine. Um, there's a former bank building that's on the site, uh, Western Oregon Dispensary is occupying the southernmost building on the property. So this site is just north of the Jack in the Box, uh, kind of to the northeast of the seventy-six station. And to the west of the property is a two-story office building and north is a vacant lot and across Springbrook Road is Springbrook Plaza. Uh, property is zone C two, again, the address is ten fifteen, uh, North Springbrook Road. So, Planning Commission had reviewed this case once before, uh, they passed order number twenty eighteen dash fourteen. Um, that moved forward, there's a process, uh, that the applicant has to go through with the Oregon Liquor Control Commission for approval. Uh, they are currently backlogged, uh, Mr. Stewart can talk more about that process if you'd like to, his point in time in the agenda. Um, so with that, we've communicated, there was an opportunity for a six-month extension onto that conditional use permit and that order. Uh, that was submitted and a decision was issued with miscellaneous case one, uh, excuse me, one one nine dash zero zero seven zero. That was back on October seventeenth of twenty nineteen. Through those conversations that Mr. Stewart and I had, uh, OLCC was not likely to get their review done in time, so, uh, on behalf of his clients, he submitted a new application for conditional use. This condition is further, uh, explains and clarifies the, the processing facility was noted in your staff report. There are four types of processing, there are edibles, concentrates, extracts, and topicals. Uh, there's also an additional endorsement or certificate for processing of an industrial camp. And the intent of the applicant is to apply for all of those through OLCC. In your staff report, there are criteria that are applicable. Uh, the first one is fifteen point two two five oh six oh, probably always a good time to enter the entire staff report into the record. This criterion deals with, uh, location, size, design, and operating characteristics. And they have minimal impact on livability, uh, of surrounding development. So what I had on the PowerPoint slide, which is also in your staff report, is the sprout, surrounding uses, kind of briefly went through that, Springbrook Plaza to the east across, uh, North Springbrook Road. Commercial development to the south and to the west. Uh, this facility is more than a thousand feet from a school or a park, and that's one of the requirements that we have. Uh, in our code, the site is point seven one four one acres. In the application, it was noted that there would be less than or equal to five employees working at this processing facility. It's also noted that there would be, uh, a total of ten vehicle trips per day. Um, as the last application on this one noted frontage improvements, uh, the site is already connected to water, wastewater, and storm. Um, the staff found in this case that the application complied with fifteen point two two five oh six oh with proposed conditions of approval. The next criterion, again, was dealing with location design, oh, there it is, oh, no, that went back to half again. Um, site planning, the development provide a convenient, functional living, working, shopping, civic environment, and staff identified in its findings that if there are any new utility service connections required, that they would need to be undergrounded. Uh, that installation of a grease interceptor, which is required in the facility, if it requires disturbance of ground, this is outside the footprint of the building, uh, it may require erosion control permit. Uh, at the time of the building permit, the next finding we identified was, again, related to the grease interceptor and there are provisions in Oregon Plumbing Code. And there are additional provisions in the Newburgh Municipal Code, uh, under section thirteen point one zero point oh eight oh. And they would need to comply with both the Plumbing Code and the Newburgh Municipal Code. Another finding we identified is that there's any new lighting that is required, it needed to comply with NMC fifteen point four two five oh four oh. And that essentially indicates that at the property line, you can have no more than point five foot candles of light. But there are also OLCC regulations regarding lighting, um, that they have to adhere to. Sometimes we find, as we do with banks, is that state requirements supersede our local provisions. Another one was comment from the building official that, uh, the facility and the improvements, uh, is a change in use would require building permits such as mechanical equipment plumbing. They were moving any walls that were structural, they have to get structural permits and so forth. Uh, overall, the staff found that the use, given this location design, site planning provides a convenient and functional working environment, uh, will be as attractive as, as, uh, other uses in the general vicinity. The next criterion will be consistent with code, and staff found in that case that the marijuana processing facility with the conditions of approval that are being recommended would be consistent with the development code. So there were five conditions of approval that were listed out in your staff report, but first being the applicant be required to underground any new utility service connections to the site. Number two, the applicant may be required to obtain an erosion and sedimentation control permit from the city at the time of building permit if more than fifty, excuse me, five hundred square feet of land is disturbed during installation of the grease interceptor. Three, the applicant shall install a grease removal device per the Oregon Plumbing Code, Specialty Code, one oh one four point zero. Uh, fats, oils, and grease, which is called fog, solid, or viscous substances, or anything that can clog the sewer system, are not allowed to be discharged into the sewer system per NMC thirteen point one oh point oh eight oh. Uh, general provisions subsection B, subsection three, and subsection B, subsection seventeen. The fourth condition that is recommended is the applicant shall provide information showing compliance with NMC fifteen four twenty five oh four oh for exterior lighting. And finally, the fifth one, the applicant is required to obtain the necessary building permits for the marijuana processing facility. So staff's recommendation in regards to this for the Planning Commission is moved to adopt Planning Commission Order twenty twenty dash oh two, which approves the requested conditional use permit with the attached conditions. That's all I have, thank you.
Very well, thank you, Mr. Rux, do we have any questions for staff?
None from Commissioner Wright, PC.
Very well, I'm seeing heads shaking, so, uh, we'll move on to open the public, or open the record for public comment at this time. And, uh, for the applicant, who is, is he, are they here? You're muted, Doug.
I always forget that, yes, Anthony Stewart is here, Anthony?
Okay.
Uh, first and foremost, mentioned earlier, thank you very much for the adjustment here to be able to conduct government electronically from a distance, it's very much appreciated. Um, I, I think Doug did a fantastic job, this is our second return to the Planning Commission, uh, for this same facility. We, uh, just in the background for the people of you who may join the commissioner, I haven't had a chance to appear in front of, uh, in the past. The Ralston, Ralston is owned by the principal, which is Ms. Sherry Ralston. She has operated Western Oregon Dispensary since twenty sixteen in Newburgh, um, without, uh, we're very proud, we've had zero infractions in this facility, the, the company has had zero infractions. But in this facility, we've been proud to support the community with a lot of tax dollars, this is a processing facility with full sales. We have visitors, um, as, as is the case with all of the affiliated enterprises with Western Oregon Dispensary, we will maintain a one hundred percent, uh, compliance record in this, in this case. Uh, where processing may include, um, extraction or concentrates, if there is a higher threshold of, uh, regulatory approvals that we will have to receive from the state, and, uh, Western Oregon is committed to maintaining those. Um, I'm here to answer any questions if you have them, um, but most importantly, we really appreciate the, uh, opportunity to continue and expand in Newburgh and, uh, hopefully continue to expand and bring more jobs. Uh, that's ultimately one of our goals, the community has been very good to us, and we are gracious and thankful to be able to, uh, return the, the favor to the community.
Okay, thank you very much, anyone have any questions for the applicant? Fisher Wright? No, sorry, I saw a green light. Um, okay, thank you very much, sir. Uh, do we have any opponents, uh, available, Doug, you're muted again, I can see you talking.
I was just gonna say, this is the opportunity for you to ask if there are any proponents or opponents to the proposed application.
Yes, I was just asking if there's any opponents we have here available for us, that since the applicant and the proponent, do we have any proponents or, or opponents? I'm assuming.
Mr. Chair, this is, there are none, no opponent physically present at the meeting in, in City Hall.
Okay, thank you. Um, if, if there's no questions for the applicant and we, and we seen, uh, and there's nothing for the applicant to rebut, I think we'll move on and go ahead and close the public record regarding this matter, move on to final recommendations from staff.
So again, staff would move that the, uh, Planning Commission adopt Order twenty twenty dash oh two approving the requested condition use permit with the attached conditions.
Very well, thank you very much. So, we'll now open this for any deliberations by the commission, uh, what do we think about this, uh, application in front of us?
Commissioner PC Wright?
Go ahead.
Um, I know there's a deficit in the state for such, uh, facilities and a good record. Um, and given history, no problems with it. And the fact that the applicant knows when it comes to concentrates, when it comes to, uh, extracts, um, that they do have to plan for a hotter uh, containment issues and other things like that, which I'm sure the state will go, have already gone over with them. I think it's actually wonderful and can provide a lot of jobs and accessibility here in the city.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any thoughts or comments? Okay, well, if that's the case, I think we'll move on to a motion, do we, what do we think about this?
I'll make a motion to approve Planning Commission Order two oh two oh dash oh two as presented, this is Commissioner Ficker.
Very well, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Planning Commissioner Wright, second?
Very well, I have a motion and a second, uh, Bobby, can I get a roll call vote, please? Or how would this work?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, Jay, Jason Dale?
I vote yes.
Robert Ficker?
Yes.
Jenna Morris?
Yes.
Chris Wright?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Very well, uh, since that constitutes a quorum, the motion passes.
Passes forward.
That's correct. Uh, thank you for your time, Mr. Stewart.
Thank you all very much, I'll be, I'll log off, but your, your time is much appreciated, thank you, Doug, and, and everybody, just know how much, uh, Doug has continued to be of assistance not only to us but the community, and we are grateful for him.
Yes, thank you, Doug, very much, and all of Morgan and the other beautiful techies there.
Agreed.
Jury's out on those guys, but, uh, so far, we're okay.
Thank you all.
Okay, moving on, we have a legislative hearing, I believe, isn't that correct?
That is correct, uh, and this legislative hearing is dealing with the, uh, uh, Yamhill County Transit Area Transit Development Plan. So this is a legislative, so that we do not have to read the legal language into the record, but we do, do have to deal with the conflicts of interest, ex parte, and, and bias.
Very well, at this time, if anyone has any, uh, conflicts of interest, ex parte contact or bias in regards to this legislative hearing for us, please speak up at this time, and we will do something about it. Seeing none, we'll move on to the staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, I will be presenting, uh, a series of comprehensive plan and municipal code amendments based on the Yamhill County Transit Area Transit Development Plan. I would like to enter in my staff report, um, CPTA dash zero zero one, as it were. Uh, I'll just continue then, uh, enter in my staff report, CPTA nineteen dash zero zero one. And DCA nineteen dash zero zero one, along with all the exhibits and attachments into the public record.
Very well, so noted.
So, just a short background, um, this plan was started by the Yamhill County Transit Authority in two thousand and seventeen. Uh, the city of Newburgh participated as a member of the, uh, project advisory committee. And then on October second, two thousand and eighteen, the project advisory committee made a recommendation to the Yamhill County Board of Commissioners to, uh, approve the plan. On October eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen, the Yamhill County Board of Commissioners approved the Transit Development Plan. And then on February nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen, um, the city council passed resolution two thousand and nineteen dash three five three four, which directed, uh, staff to initiate comprehensive plan and municipal code amendments, along in that, uh, resolution, there was also, uh, that engineering would take a look at their Public Works and Design and Construction Manual. They did in fact take a look at that, they didn't see a change based on the recommendations in the Transit Development Plan. And then on October, or December twelfth, two thousand and nineteen, Planning Commission conducted a public workshop and provided staff with plenty of ideas and directions, uh, to, to, uh, finish our report and, and make recommendations. So, the proposed comprehensive plan text amendments, I'll, I'll handle first. For an existing goal three, uh, which is to establish cooperative agreements to address transportation-based planning, development, operation, and maintenance. Uh, we are recommending the deletion of policy A five and replacing it with A eight, uh, there would be some renumbering, um, that's illustrated in your staff report. A eight, um, more effectively deals with, uh, transit-dependent populations, and as the Planning Commission requested, we did add a definition, um, to, uh, transit-dependent populations, and that, that is in, um, the language of this, uh, policy. So in addition to, uh, amending an existing, uh, policy, or policies for existing goal, um, we're also recommending the addition of three new goals. Um, goal thirteen, utilize Yamhill County Transit Authority Transit Development Plan as a guide, guidance document, along with that, there are five policies. Uh, goal fourteen, coordinate with Yamhill County Transit Area, again, there are, there are five policies that go along with that. And then goal fifteen, implement transit supportive improvements, and there are five policies to go with that, too. And those are the, uh, comprehensive plan, um, amendments that we're proposing. Onward to the municipal code amendments, uh, the first code amendment, there's four of them in total, uh, four sections. Um, section fifteen dot five zero five dot zero three zero oh four, what this does is basically, um, it, it provides more connectivity for, for, um, pedestrians. Uh, in the case where there's a cul-de-sac, it would allow, uh, the city to, to recommend a developer, if there's like a, a street that's a little bit further off from this cul-de-sac to say the east or west or whatever. Uh, we might be able to, um, then get this developed to, to extend, uh, a pathway. Um, it, it deals with long blocks, it just makes things a little bit more accessible for pedestrians. And additionally, we're going to utilize, um, existing code, uh, section fifteen dot five zero five dot zero three zero S, which deals with public walkway standards. The next amendment is to section, proposed amendment, is to section fifteen dot four four zero dot zero one zero, required off-street parking. Uh, currently, our development code does not have, um, a high number of parking spots, so a developer could propose a, a lot more, uh, parking and create more impervious surface than maybe we want. What this does is allow, um, a cap on those, uh, parking requirements, so, when we look at a, a given use coming, uh, into the city for an application, we, we take a look at section fifteen dot four four zero dot zero three zero. What this is, is the, the table, uh, that lists all the uses and everything, and, uh, and parking, uh, associated with a given use. Um, so what these factors will do is that if it's, uh, two parking, uh, spaces are required, and it fronts on a street with a adjacent and, adjacent on, on-street parking spaces, and we, we take that, uh, one point two number and multiply by whatever that figure to be. So, again, this is provides a cap and, and the possibility of having a little less impervious surface. The next amendment is to section fifteen dot four four zero dot one hundred, and this is for facility requirements. What we're recommending is that we delete, um, the text transit transfer stations and add the term transit centers. Um, the other deletion that we're looking at for the section is, is, uh, the one bicycle parking space for every twenty vehicle parking spaces. Um, the other deletion that we're looking at for this section is, is uh the one bicycle parking space for every twenty vehicle parking spaces. And instead, we're going to make a, a require a few more extra bicycle parking spaces. So, uh, four spaces would be required, or uh one per ten vehicle spatial spaces, and that would be whichever is greater. And then the final second, final part that this, this does amend, it um adds to short-term bicycle parking spaces requirements for transit stops. Okay, it looked like the first slide. Uh, the next amendment is to section fifteen dot four one zero dot zero two zero one and two. So, this would apply to our um uh commercial zoning uh areas, uh, C two or zoning designations, C two and C one along um East Portland Road. What this is trying to do is bring the buildings a little bit closer up to the, to the, to the road instead of having them sit back so far. And then it also provides the ability to um, if there's additional space that's needed for, say, a transit stop or um a shelter or some sort, then it allows us a little bit of flexibility that we could, we could adjust that slightly as well. Then, that is the last municipal code amendment. Onward to the statewide planning goals and, and why we feel that um the proposed amendments meet this. So, Oregon has nineteen statewide planning goals. Um, nine of these nineteen planning goals, we feel, are met uh with the proposed amendments. This would include um planning goal one, two, six, eight, nine, and eleven through fourteen. And then um of the goals that we don't feel are applicable, uh, there are six of them. And that would be three, four, five, seven, ten, and fifteen. Um, and then when we get to goals sixteen through nineteen, these apply to coastal communities, so we don't, we don't address these goals for the city of Newburgh. And when we look for any conflicts with the proposed amendments, uh, in terms of conflicts with the statewide planning goals, we didn't, we didn't determine there were any. And then uh, in the municipal code, uh, chapter fifteen one hundred requires that we have public hearings. And the planning commission and council will have a public hearing. You're having yours right now. You'll make a recommendation of the city council. And uh, we'll see what the city council uh does with that. So we feel that this section is met um by having these public hearings. And then um for the Newburgh comprehensive plan goals, there, there are fourteen comprehensive plan goals. We feel that five of these goals have been met. Uh, that would be A, B, E, I, and K, the transportation goal. Then we, uh, nine, nine of these goals, uh, we don't feel are applicable. That would be C, D, F through H, J, and L through N. And we also look for any sort of conflicts um with the Newburgh comprehensive plan that any of these amendments would cause. And we did not feel that there were any conflicts that were created. And that concludes my presentation. I'll hold off on my staff recommendation and uh turn it back over to the planning commission.
Very well, thank you. Keith, do we have any questions for Mr. Leonard? Any comments? Go ahead, Colin.
Uh, it's page six sixty-six in my packet. Um, exhibit eight of planning commission resolution twenty twenty dash three five five in the transportation section. I've noticed in uh under policies, uh, A one, two, and the amended eight. Uh, the sort of dominating verb, I guess, in the, in the uh resolutions, they tend to be a bit vague. And I'm just uh wondering, I just would like some clarification with those, especially with number eight, which is the um clarified uh, or the amended uh resolution. It says the city will facilitate transit service for its transit users with special attention to the needs of members who may be classified as transit-dependent due to factors such as age, income, and/or disabilities. Um, so I'm just curious, what does facilitate entail in terms of action or policy within the city?
Okay, so, and then Doug, feel, feel free to, to jump in. But um what this would do is um when a developer would come to the city and propose a development, it would allow us to um it would allow us to pay a little bit closer attention to, to the folks that don't necessarily have uh the ability to, to um get on transit. You know, maybe perhaps providing a transit stop in, in front of a residential development. This just um kind of urges us to pay more attentions to these populations that, that um may not have access to a car or, or uh transportation.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks Colin. Thanks Keith. Any other questions for Mr. Leonard? Okay, looks like you guys have been doing a lot of good work on, on this, and it seems pretty good to me from looking it over. And that's all I'll have to say about it before we uh move on to anything further.
Yes, I do, uh, commend the city for coming up with alternatives for builders concerning uh parking issues, giving them credits in lieu of putting in bicycle racks and other things. So, really good work, you guys. We'll use some really great thoughts in here.
Okay. Well, if there, yes.
Uh, one thing, so that we've done the staff report, we do have to ask the question if there's any proponents or opponents to the proposal.
Ah, yes, thank you very much. Uh, at this time, I'd like to open the public rec- record for any proponents or opponents we, that may exist to this legislative hearing before us. Do we have anybody here?
Uh, Mr. Chair, there is no one physically present at City Hall, and I, unless Doug already mentioned it, I don't believe we received any comments, emailed comments.
Okay, very well, s- seeing, seeing none and hearing none, and none being present, uh, we'll go ahead and close the public record for commentary at this time regarding this matter, and move on to final recommendations from staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so staff recommends that the planning commission adopt resolution twenty twenty dash three fifty-five, uh, which recommends to the city council that they adopt the requested amendments to the Newburgh Comprehensive Plan and Municipal Code sections. Uh, I won't read all those, a lot of fifteens, um, but I've already read them. So, um, we do recommend the, the approval of both the comprehensive plan amendments and the municipal code amendment as outlined.
Very well, thank you. So at this time, we will open it up to commissioners for any comments or deliberations. What do we think? Mr. Wright?
I've already stated, I really think it's a good.
I'm responding to your green light, sorry.
I didn't even, why have a green light?
It probably happens if you make a little noise.
Oh, okay. I knew it, as we all.
Me too, okay. Uh, anyone else have any commentary or anything they'd like to add? Okay, uh, that point, then I guess we'll open up to the, to a motion.
Motion to adopt, planning commissioner, motion to adopt twenty twenty three fifty-five and all the other numbers associated. Can we?
I'm sorry?
Can we say that in that manner, or is there a certain?
I think we can work out the paperwork, sure. Uh, we have a motion, and we have, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Oh, we'll, we'll go with Commissioner Morris. She's been quiet tonight. There's a second.
Sounds good.
Commissioner Morris, I second the motion.
Very well, I have a motion and a second. Can we get a roll call vote from Bobby, please?
Okay, Jason Dale?
Yes.
Robert Ficker?
Yes.
Jenna Morris?
Yes.
Chris Wright?
Yes.
Thank you.
Very well, most, thank you. Very well, motion passes on this recommendation to put this matter before the city council. And moving on to our next thing, unless there's anything else, that's items from staff, is that correct? Uh, Director Rux?
That is correct. Items from staff are next. So, um, unfortunately, our PowerPoints aren't working correctly this evening. So I'm going to just kind of talk with you about what's been going on and give you a briefing on our urban renewal feasibility study. So, I fortunately do have my slides, so I can kind of speak from them. We're going to talk about background. We're going to talk about citizens advisory committee. Uh, we're going to talk about the boundary we've been working on, the financial analysis that we're working on, potential projects, and then next steps. So, in your packet, there's quite a few pieces of material, but the PowerPoint I'm going to kind of talk through is basically about the last uh ten or twelve pages of, of that section of the packet. So, you may ask, why are we doing urban renewal? And so we had a graphic, it's in your packet. We've been doing a lot of work over the course of the last four years. It's kind of led to where we're at today. So in two thousand and sixteen, we did the Newburgh Economic Development Strategy. Uh, we did the Strategic Tourism Plan. We updated our Transportation System Plan. And we did the Downtown Improvement Plan. So a busy year in two thousand and sixteen. In two thousand and seventeen, we did the, our, our Water Master Plan. Two thousand and eighteen, we did our Wastewater Master Plan. By the time we got to two thousand and nineteen, we updated our Economic Development Strategy. We did the Newburgh Community Visioning Program, and that's why we updated our Economic Development Strategy. Uh, we did the Newburgh Riverfront Master Plan, and we also did a housing needs analysis. So that brings us to two thousand and twenty, and we're currently working on an economic opportunities analysis. And you'll get a briefing at that topic at your next meeting. And we've been working on our Urban Renewal Feasibility Study. Uh, what's important to note is in many of these plans, if you look at the Economic Development Strategy, the Downtown Improvement Plan, the Community Visioning, uh, Riverfront Master Plan, our Housing Needs Analysis, is each one of those have identified in those documents the, to look at doing an urban renewal program, otherwise known as tax increment financing, as a tool, as a financial tool to move those plans forward. So, in doing an urban renewal feasibility study, one of the first things we have to do is talk about a boundary. What would a boundary look like? There are statutory requirements in ORS four fifty-seven uh related to blight, and so the statute defines what blight means. We have to look at the finances, and there are statutory provisions in regards to that as well. Um, and I mentioned kind of at the beginning of the presentation, we have to look at potential projects. So what we do is we go back to all of those plans I just mentioned to identify what kind of capital improvement projects uh, or other projects are identified. There are a variety of statutory limitations in ORS four fifty-seven. So, as I go through this, I'll get into what some of those statutory components are. So our citizens advisory committee has met three times. Uh, they provided input to us on a boundary, potential projects, the financial analysis, and public input opportunities. So, in your packet, there is a map, and it's shaded in blue, and so it has an area that's in the downtown, which is slightly larger than the Downtown Improvement Plan boundary. It has what we call two uh cherry stems. One goes down Blaine Street, the other one goes down River Street. And then it takes us down to Knight Street, and then we pick up through Riverfront Master Plan area. So this entire area is about six hundred and twenty-two acres. As part of this process, when we looked at the downtown, um, the committee said, oh, we really need to go to the north side of the street or a south side of the street uh to make sure that we're picking that up, so that if we had uh transportation improvements, sidewalks, ADA ramps, that those could be eligible to be funded. Uh, they also looked at Blaine Street, and there's uh some R three land. It's on the west side of Blaine, uh, south of Third Street, and the committee recommended that we include that area as well. In the riverfront area, when we did that plan, we actually stopped on the south side of Knight Street. And the committee, at this point, is recommending that we go to the north side of Knight Street. Again, uh, we have Edwards Elementary in that area, so looking at the opportunity to do sidewalk, ADA ramp, bike lanes, and so forth, so to include the full width of a particular ride of way. The in ORS four fifty-seven, we have limitations. And so we start with that an urban renewal area can be no more than twenty-five percent of the land area that's within your existing city limits. So, the study area that we've identified is just slightly under six hundred and twenty-three acres in size. Uh, the city of Newburgh's acreage is three thousand seven hundred and ninety-nine point nine two, to be approximate. And so that percentage comes out at sixteen point seven four, so we are under the twenty-five percent limitation. The assessed value, based on where we were at back in April, and the numbers changed slightly, but we were at a hundred and fifty-nine point five million of assessed value within the urban renewal area. And the city's assessed value was a little over two billion, and so that came out at seven point eight percent. So again, we were under the twenty-five percent limitation. Uh, we have our consultants go back and look at some historical growth patterns. And so they did a study between twenty, uh, excuse me, between two thousand and eight and two thousand and twenty. And so they looked at the real, uh, the county's real market value. And if you look at the material in the packet, it shows there are some years that, you know, twelve point nine percent real market value growth. And then there are years when there was uh a negative nine point nine six. The highest was seen was in two thousand and eighteen, when there was a thirty-three percent. So, but we operate urban renewal off of an assessed value. And so in your packet, there's another column that shows what the percentage change is year over year for assessed value. And that ranged anywhere from one point two two to seven point four six, and so that's for the entire county. So the average annual uh growth rate for the assessed value in the county was four point three percent. So they did a similar calculation for the real market value within the city. Um, and they did the calculation for the assessed value within the city. And the average annual growth rate over that time horizon came out at four point seven eight percent. There was one kind of anomaly in two thousand and eighteen, where there were some issues with central assessment on utilities, where we actually had some rates go down, and so they did some calculations on the backside to kind of adjust our overall average annual growth rate to get to that four point seventy percent. So the next that was in your PowerPoint slide was a, basically a graph representing visually what those numbers look like from what I just shared with you. The next piece that the committee has been working on is financial projections. And so, uh, they, we've looked at a growth rate within the urban renewal area at four percent, five percent, six percent, and seven percent. Uh, in the table that was prepared, we have an average annual exception value, and that's the value at a four percent that would require for the three percent increase plus additional new growth. And that would be, basically, you'd have to have one point eight million dollars of investment. If you did, the five percent is four point three million, six percent, seven point seven, and seven percent is twelve point three. Uh, we then looked at what we call the net, the total net tax increment financing value. And that's basically taking your maximum indebtedness, I'm going to simplify this, uh, taking your maximum indebtedness and interest you would pay on debt service. And so at four percent, it was sixty-two million, five percent was eighty-eight point three, six percent was a hundred and twenty-one point two million, and seven percent was a hundred and sixty-one point five million. So from each of those, our financial consult calculated what our maximum indebtedness could be. And so under a four percent growth scenario, it would be fifty-two point seven million, under a five percent, it's seventy-five point three, six percent is a hundred and four million, and seven percent is a hundred and thirty-eight point nine. 6% is $104 million, and 7% is $138.9. Well, the next calculation that was done and shared with the Citizens Committee was, was called capacity. And so we have to look at what the value of projects would be in the year 2020, in $2020 values. So a 4% growth rate came out at 29.2, 5% is 41.2, 6% is 56.2, and the 7% growth rate was $74.4 million. So the consultants then broke that down over the life of an anticipated 30-year plan. And what the numbers show is that typically, the first years of a plan start off low in the dollar value, the tax increment that's being generated and collected. It's when you get to the outward years, out towards the year 20, out to year 30, is those dollar values significantly increased. Yeah, you might ask, well, why are we doing all of this? Well, the committee is going to have to make a recommendation to the city council, and they're going to have to pick a growth rate. So if you went back to the historical growth rate, where I mentioned it was 4.78%, that was an average annual growth rate, 4% might be conservative, because the number shows that overall in the community, we've been growing faster than that. If you go to a 5% growth rate, that's slightly higher than what the city's assessed value, average annual growth rate has been. And then 6% is a little bit more aggressive development, and then there's 7%. Well, one of the things you have to factor in is you have to look at what might happen. So if you went back to the map and looked at the riverfront area, we've got a mill that West Rock is looking to sell, and might that mill be repurposed or redeveloped in some fashion? We've got other vacant residential land and commercial land. We've got some infill development in the riverfront area. Then, when you get to the downtown area, there's infill projects to happen. So if you were walking down First Street or Hancock, you'll see a bunch of vacant parking lots. We've also got stuff to do redevelopment along Second Street, more for the residential side. So the committee has seen these numbers. They haven't made a decision. We did not ask them to make any decision to think about it, because they'll be coming back for another meeting. We'll now further talk about what is the growth rate that we want to identify and recommend to the city council. We also had our consultants run some numbers of what we think our maximum assessed value can be. There's another calculation that's in ORS 457, based upon a community size, and we believe that range is between $146 million and $148 million. So that's a little bit higher than what was identified even at the top range of our 7% growth rate. So what we're talking about is that in any of the scenarios, we're under the maximum that state statute would allow. In your packet, there is a memo from our consultant, Elaine Howard Consulting, which outlines impacts related to what we call overlapping taxing districts. So in this case, the city of Newburgh is an overlapping taxing district. Others include Yan Hill County, Yan Hill County Extension, Yan Hill County Soil, Twalton Valley Fire and Rescue, Sheehan Park and Wrap. And then we have a school category for those districts as well, so the Newburgh School District, the Willamette ESD, Portland Community College. And so they did some additional, some detailed preliminary analysis, looking at what the financial impact would be on the overlapping taxing districts. And so this is always where it's a good point to say, tax increment financing, otherwise known as urban renewal, does not increase your property taxes. What it is, it's a redirection of the property taxes that are already being paid. Instead of going to the overlapping taxing districts, a percentage of that goes to the urban renewal district. And that's where we get the 3% increase year over year, which is the standard. We would then also collect the tax increment on new development. So if somebody comes in and builds a new apartment building, they build a new industrial building, those funds would then flow to the urban renewal district in order to do capital improvement projects, transportation sewer, water storm activities. In the downtown, it might also include some facade improvement. I mentioned earlier, when we talk about transportation, we're just not talking about the curve to curve of the roadway. We're also talking about the sidewalks and the ADA ramps. So for the city of Newburgh, over the life of the plan, is that at a 4% annual average growth rate, the impact to the city's would be a little under $11.4 million over a 30-year period. If you went up to a 7% average annual growth rate, that number goes up to a little over $29.6 million. So there's a table in your packet that you can look at. I don't want to go through all of the numbers, but it shows what the anticipated impacts would be on all of the overlapping taxing districts. We also have been working on projects. And so this takes me back to downtown plan, riverfront plan, transportation sewer, water, and storm. And so Brett Musick has been working with us, and we've been going through all of the projects that have been listed in these plans that would be within the proposed boundary area. And at the time, we were back on April 13th, we had a number of a little over $88 million of estimated project costs in $2020 values. So earlier, I was mentioning these growth rates and these project costs. And so these project costs exceed what the financial capacity. That's to say, urban renewal cannot pay for all of the infrastructure improvements. Since April 13th, Brett has done a lot more work, and our number now is actually up to about $116 million. We had the subconsultant do some additional work, like undergrounding overhead utility lines along Second Street. What would the cost be for doing sidewalk and ADA improvements down Blaine Street? Similar, they did an evaluation of sidewalks and ADA improvements along Knight Street, basically from Blaine Street over to Pacific Street. So the numbers have gone up slightly. We've also been able to calculate administrative costs, that's to administer a program over a 30-year period. So when you add all of those together, now we're up in that $115, $116, $117 million range. Now, one of the things that came from a briefing we did at city council recently on this topic was, well, there's not enough urban renewal funds to do all the projects. That is correct. Urban renewal is not necessarily in place to do all of the projects. So we've also looked at our, all of our SDC programs, and Brett's calculated each of the projects, if they were eligible for an SDC credit or using SDC funds to do some improvements, probably a better way to say that. And so we built all of that information and shared it with our consultants as well. We've also identified where other funding sources may come from. Might there be any funding from Oregon Department of Transportation for trails in the riverfront area? The Oregon State Parks might be a potential funding source. So we built all of that information. One of the big ones is developers contributing to these infrastructure improvements as well. So think of it as a partnership. So in an urban renewal plan, there may be some projects that an urban renewal agency says, yes, we're going to build this water line, or we're going to build this roadway. There would be other projects where it may be a partnership and/or we find other funding sources, but in a partnership between a developer and urban renewal agency, your renewal agency may contribute some percentage towards that infrastructure improvement in the developer base for the balance. Keep in mind that one of the intents of having an urban renewal program is to attract development. Development brings additional tax dollars, and it also brings additional employment. And so when you think back about when the mill closed, and we lost over 200 well-paying family wage jobs, could urban renewal be a tool to try to attract and repurpose or redevelop portions of the riverfront area? And in downtown, it's to attract development for new commercial, and as the downtown plan calls for, is going with mixed-use development, so could we get some ground floor retail in some upper floors that might be housing of some type? We've had some discussions about online, so we had a complete schedule laid out. We were supposed to have an open house. But unfortunately, the coronavirus canceled that. So we are currently working on what we're calling an Urban Renewal 101 informational piece, and we're looking to break down a PowerPoint presentation with voiceover into three to five segments. It would be about five minutes each. So the consultant can explain, you know, what is urban renewal? Why do urban renewal? What's the financing? How does that work? How does the financing impact schools? Or not impact schools? That's a good, always a good segue, that there's things called direct and indirect impacts. So schools, like Newburgh Public Schools and the Willamette Education Service District, they are actually backfilled by the state school fund on a per pupil calculation. So as we've been sharing this information with the school district, they can run some of their own calculations to see what those impacts may be on them. The direct impacts come from the other overlapping taxing districts. So when I was talking about the impacts to the city, over a 4% to 7% in the, and the dollar amount for that, that's considered to be a direct impact. Direct impact also is on Yan Hill County, Twalton Valley Fire and Rescue, SoCal Conservation District, et cetera. PCC also has a direct impact, because they are not backfilled by the state school fund. We've also put together an informational piece, which is a two-page fact sheet on urban renewal. One of our subconsultants put this together, and Lacy DiGraff, our community engagement specialist, has assisted us with this. Lacy's also, she took a very basic website that I put together, and she embellished it, so it looks like it's professional rather than Doug doing it. But it answers a lot of questions. It has, what's in your packet, it has a schedule, a timeline. Of course, we're updating all of that now that we're not able to do our first open house. We were also planning to do a second open house. We decided we're probably going to cancel that. We will get information up on our website. So what that leads us to is we're doing more public information online on our website. We may send out a postcard to property owners within the study area and direct them to the website to get more information. The next Citizens Committee meeting is June 8th, where we're going to talk more about a draft of a feasibility study. And then we'll probably talk about projects as well. The committee has another meeting in June, which is June 29th. At that meeting, we'll be looking for a recommendation from the committee to go to the city council on is it feasible to do an urban renewal program in Newburgh? And then we're scheduled for July 20th to go to the city council with that feasibility study and for a determination from them if it is feasible or not. Feasibility study is the first step. It's really kind of, it's really a technical analysis, lots of numbers. You see some of my comments, it's numeric-driven. If the city council on July 20th says, yes, it is feasible to have an urban renewal program, the next step would be coming back to council to form an urban renewal agency. That has to be done by, with a public hearing and by ordinance. An ordinance has to take 30 days to go into effect. We would then start preparing what's called a plan work for an urban renewal program. As we go through that, we step back, we have to start making choices about what projects would we want to fund, in full, in part? Is there any final adjustments to the proposed boundary that I've mentioned several times? They have to do an analysis of how it complies with our comprehensive plan. And through that analysis, do we have to make any modifications to our comprehensive plan in order to adopt an urban renewal program? All of that work, if the council says, yes, it is feasible, would take place between August and the end of December. And then basically, in the months of January, February, March, and April would be a process where we do what's called confer consult with the overlapping taxing districts. I've already started talking with them and sharing information. There are public hearings processes. One, part of this process is that the urban renewal agency would have to initiate, essentially creating a plan and report, and they have to deliver that plan and report to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission has to hold a hearing on that plan and report, and you make a recommendation to the city council. So you are in this conduit of this process that's going to take, started in January 1st and would end by the end of April of 2021. So that's a lot to digest in 25 minutes. Any questions?
Any questions for any commissioners? Commissioner Wright, you're muted.
Commissioner Wright, you have to unmute yourself.
There you go.
I didn't do that. Hello, Commissioner Wright. Are these projections, 4% growth and projected income, based on current finances coming in? Do we know a statistical amount of... Since the COVID thing, is this 100% guaranteed income coming in?
Commissioner, nothing is 100% guaranteed, so we have to go back and look at the trends. Only death and taxes are guaranteed. So what we do is we go back and look at the trends, and so typically, property owners pay, I think Matt told me, it's somewhere around 90... 95 to 97% pay their taxes on time.
Okay, good. All right, good for our county. Let's hear it. So pretty much, we can really use these numbers, not even considering what's potentially going on right now, and just going forward with these numbers, period?
These, what I would say, Commissioner, these are the preliminary set of numbers. There will be some additional adjustments to what I just walked through with you. There may be some small percentage changes by the time something comes back to you later as we continue to refine things. Project numbers are probably pretty solid, based on 2020 values. I don't see, the admin might adjust a little bit, because we're driving that as a percentage, 10% of the maximum indebtedness amount. We did a very extensive calculation internally of what the admin cost would be, and then we look back at what typically has been done around the state of Oregon, and our internal had a higher number. We backed that down. The real purpose of urban renewal is to get the money to do the infrastructure to attract development. So we're trying to keep our administrative costs within reason and not have it overinflated, but not seemingly really underinflated as well, so that it puts an additional burden on the general fund.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Director Rux?
I've got a question, just out of curiosity. This is Commissioner Morris. Why was the area chosen that was chosen if we're only at 16%? Like what, what was the reasoning to do those two cherry stems?
Well, we did not want to do two urban renewal districts. We wanted to do just one boundary. So our boundary kind of has a donut in the middle, between River Street and Blaine Street. So we started with the Downtown Improvement Plan, and so that was just slightly under 100 acres. When we did that study and council adopted it, approved it back in December of 2016. When we did the Riverfront Plan, that was about 460 acres. And so then we looked at it and said, the downtown would not be able to generate... I got to close my door, because cleaning crews here. And so a 100-acre downtown urban renewal district would not be able to generate enough tax increment to help move the projects forward identified in the plan. Some of the, the biggest cost in the downtown area is trans- Some of the, the biggest cost in the downtown area is transportation improvements. Roadways, road diets on Hancock and First, ADA ramps, sidewalks, very expensive. In the riverfront area, we're looking at that from a perspective of the mill is closed. We're hoping that West Rock will find a buyer, and that buyer will either repurpose and/or redevelop the mill site. So that's about 115 acres of just mill property itself. So we knew that there was some potential in the riverfront for this significant investment to occur. And so we looked at then, well, how can we tie? If we know one couldn't stand on its own, but the other one could, can we link those together? So that's where we looked at Blaine Street and River Street, is making that connection.
Gotcha. Okay, cool. Thank you.
Commissioner Wright, Doug? Considering we're at 16. something percent, is there any other land or areas that could be included that might also need a little leg up within the donut hole or any other arterials?
We looked at, committee has talked about that as well. So again, go back, is the boundary within the downtown improvement plan, they actually increased that boundary slightly. So where it ended in an alley between Second and Third, it now goes all the way to the south side of Third Street. When you get to the north, it ran down the alley between Hancock and Sheridan. They've now moved it all the way to the north side of Sheridan. They added the area on the west side of Blaine Street, the R3, because the R3 is an area that we have deficiency in, in multifamily development. They also talked about an area up on the railroad tracks that's industrial, and looked at that. So we gave them, when you look through the packet, we gave them a bunch of different alternatives to consider before they came up with their proposal that they have. So they chose not to look north of Sheridan Street up to the railroad tracks. They looked at the industrial along the railroad tracks and identified that as an area that maybe in the future, there could be an expansion of the boundary, and there are limitations on how you can do and how many acres you can add to an urban renewal district. We looked at the area down south, and so that donut area around the schools and so forth. They looked at that. We went back to the old 2001 urban renewal plan. It had a little bit different configuration. But the boundary they ended up proposing is very similar to the 2001. So yes, there was a robust discussion about the boundary.
Robust. I like that. So none of the mill district that will hopefully become a mill district could be added to that urban renewal?
Well, it is. So the West End Mill District is within the proposed urban renewal district boundary.
On the corner. Okay.
Down off of Main Street and Hancock up to the railroad tracks. Yep, that is within the proposed district. The other side.
Just because it doesn't all hit the 25, doesn't mean when you get too greedy, so.
Where I was just going to go, Mr. Chairs. There was also discussions about, just because you can go to 25% doesn't mean you should go to 25%. Because you have to remember, this is a program whereby the overlapping taxing districts are allowing a part of their tax receipts to be redirected to the urban renewal agency in order to attract investment. With the goal at the end of the plan is that assessed value that comes back onto the tax rolls will be significantly higher than without an urban renewal program. So if you push the envelope too far, it has more near-term as well as mid-long-term consequences on those overlapping districts.
Okay. Any further questions? Okay. It sounds all pretty good to me. And I like you guys didn't settle on 15%. It sounds like you didn't do anything if you just go for 15.
So again, this is just.
All about the how you sell it.
So this is just a briefing to keep you apprised of the work that's being done by Citizens Committee. We just gave, I mentioned, a briefing to council. So they got the same presentation. Now it's with you, and then we're back to the Citizens Committee again.
Okay. Well, we'll look forward to the next time we see it. Okay, so moving on to the next item from staff, which is commission activities, is that right?
Yes. So in your packet, you had your memo. So on June 11th, we're looking at, we have a quasi-judicial hearing for a comp plan zone change for some property at 717 North College Street. So keep that in mind. Ex parte contacts, don't do it. We'll be giving.
Hey, lockdown.
Yeah. True that. Well, I'll give you a briefing on where we're at with our economic opportunities analysis. And so this is another one of those pieces that is one of the legs we need to do an urban growth boundary expansion. And then, because we just had a meeting with our Citizens Committee on Urban Renewal, I'll be able to give you another brief update of what's happening with that one. Out in July, we're looking at taking the vertical housing tax abatement program to you. Workshop on the West End Mill District. And then again, another opportunity to give you an update and briefing on where we're at with urban renewal. Then in August, right now, all I've got on the calendar is an update on our economic opportunities analysis. If you kind of look forward in time, you know, we'll get busy towards the end of the year. One of the things that will be coming forward is the EOA project. It will be coming before you, probably more the November-ish timeframe. We'll be working on a public, semi-public land analysis, starting in the fall. We'll be doing an update to our housing needs analysis. So we have new population numbers that will come out and be formalized next month. And we've also had development occur, and so we need to update all of that data. So we've got a bunch of things in the queue that will be coming forward to you towards the latter part of 2020.
Okay. Well, that's it. Thank you very much. Move on, and we'll go to items from commissioners. Does anybody have anything while we're stuck on screen here? No, seeing a lot of shaking faces, okay. So if there's nothing more, it's nice to see you all despite these trying times. And we'll see you all. Are we doing Zoom for next month, or are we doing more?
I would.
We don't know.
Fully assume we're going to be doing Zoom.
For a while.
Well, I think we'll start rating hate mail until we can, not to Doug, but to the state, to make that not happen anymore, so. Anyway, because so, we will, go ahead.
Privacy.
Okay, we will adjourn the meeting then. So thank you all for your time, and we'll see you next time, either via screen or via in person. Thank you.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Appreciate you. Good night, everyone.